Welcome to all of you out there. And welcome to anyone who watches us on delay broadcast. Paulette, we're just gonna let you teach us.
Thank you. Can I jump right in there? Obviously, as you can see from the first slide, the general broad topics that we would like to cover with you tonight. The topics that we intend to cover with you tonight, kind of at a broad level, are review of the June 2018 year end performance measures. We would like to talk a little bit about our general fund budget. And then we are going to talk a little bit about October 1st certified annulment. If at any time you have questions, please don't hesitate to jump in and ask them. We would like for this, intend for this to be kind of a discussion, so. Marshantown Community School District, of course, has a strategic plan, and one of the goals within that strategic plan has to do with resources. Since we have goals, we also want to have metrics by which to measure those. And so, we're gonna take a look first at some of those metrics that we include in our Board Policy 703.4 requires that a report of the following measures, the things that are listed there, shall be made as of June 30th each year, including at a minimum the prior three years. So this is where I began compiling the information based on this board policy. Some of these things, we're just gonna kind of not spend as much time talking about, but we do want to report them out. And then the other thing that we're gonna talk a little bit about is spending authority, which isn't included in this list. The first thing, the first metric that we are reporting to you is the total revenues and expenditures by fund as of June 30th. June 30th is the close of our fiscal year, fiscal 18, and so these are the numbers as of that date. Please keep in mind that we have not yet had our fiscal 18 audit. So these are all unaudited numbers at this point. This report will show you by fund, the beginning fund balance, the revenues received for the entire year, the expenditures for the entire year, and the June 30th ending fund balance. We have several funds listed here. As you're all aware, we, as a school district, we operate under governmental accounting standards, and we operate by fund, so each of these funds are a self-balancing fund. Of course, the one that you're most familiar with is our operating fund, the general fund, and we're gonna spend some time kind of digging down into that one a little bit deeper, but we do have five funds that receive property taxes. The general fund, the management fund, PEPAL, Pearl, and debt service. The other five funds that are listed there do not receive any property tax revenue.
Do you want to state what PEPAL and Pearl do so that everybody understands that?
Yes, absolutely. So the PEPAL, which is our physical plant and equipment levy, the Pearl, which is our playground equipment, physical equipment recreation levy, and sales tax fund, those three funds exist to, for basically construction purposes. We can build things with money out of those funds, whereas we cannot use general fund dollars for construction purposes. We use the PEPAL and the Pearl and the sales tax for a lot of our major equipment purchases, one-to-one phone book purchases, fix a roof, replace HVAC unit, things of that nature.
The Pearl is shared money with the city, so we use it primarily for playground enhancement or other things that would be community use facilities. They use it more for supporting programming like parks and recreation.
Any questions on any of those fund types or what they do? I can certainly go into some more detail, but if you guys are already aware. So the most important thing probably to note on here is that we started our general fund balance at the beginning of fiscal 17 with just about $6.2 million. We had revenues during the year of $62.9 million. We had expenditures of $64.9 million. So that deficit spending during that fiscal year did lower our fund balance from six million to down, down to four million. So that is probably the most significant thing to note on there. The other funds, we did have some growth in our PEPAL fund balance, but that is also we're kind of saving some money for projects on the horizon, so.
Tell me what the downward adjustments, what do those represent, how are they?
Those are adjustments that were made to the books on July 1st of 17, and they would have been probably, a downward or upward adjustment is made if, when you submit your certified annual report to the DE at the end of the year, we submit certain numbers. Well, if the auditors come in and do the audit, and then they find things that, entries that need to be made back to that prior year, we can't change what we've submitted to the DE, so all of those entries are run through as downward or upward adjustments. So in this particular year, on July 1st, 2017, we had four funds that were different beginning balances in our audit versus what they were on our books. Did I get that covered correctly?
Yes, yes.
Can you explain like in more English terms, just take the general fund at $30,000, why?
It could be that the auditors found something that maybe was supposed to be accrued, and it just didn't get, the entry didn't get made on the books by the time we submitted it to the DE. I can certainly go back and dig into those, but I don't recall right off the top of my head what they all pertain to.
So for example, a payable that wouldn't have been booked at June 30th that should have been once the audit was done, so if we would have found an invoice that was paid in July or August that should have been accrued back to June that for whatever reason didn't get done, then that would be possibly one of those downward adjustments that are on that slide.
So is it like just an adjustment because it's in the wrong year?
Yes.
So is it all of the, that's pretty innocuous, kind of normal sort of adjustment that happens on, happens on our books, very common that happens, right? That's pretty common. Are any of these downward adjustments due to anything uncommon, unusual, process breakdowns, things that need to be fixed or changed?
Well, it is our hope and intention as we move forward that we have all of our journal entries done by the time we submit our CAR to the Department of Ed on September 15th. That's when we are required to report all of our financial information to them, and it is our intention to make sure that we have gotten through everything and have all those adjustments made prior to submitting our books. So when our auditors come in, they don't find any things that were potentially not booked that should have been. My goal has always been to have no audit adjustments, so that is a goal.
So that's a good goal, but you didn't answer the question. And so, the question was, were any of these particular downward adjustments in these four funds due to anything that was unusual or processes that need to be fixed or changed?
We will, yes, definitely work on improving our process so that we have everything done by September 15th.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a third time, and hopefully, if you don't know, you can just say, "I don't know." Were any of these adjustments made for processes that were broken or things that you wanted to change?
I can't say that for sure.
Okay, okay.
One of the, one of the common adjustments, although it's probably minor, is with a district of our size, oftentimes there's enrollment count disparities, and I don't know if that then gets adjusted or how that works.
Not, not in this manner. That gets adjusted on our certified annulment, our certified budget.
Hey Paulette, year on year, obviously it would be an issue, but with your experiences to see a reduction in the fund balance of the general from 6.1 to ending at 4.1, obviously it's an issue if it's year on year, but, and I'm not sure what it was last year, the year before, but does it cause you great concern to see that happen in one year?
It does cause great concern to see that happen in one year. Deficit spending is always a concern, and we are going to get to a slide that's gonna dig deeper down into that general fund and analyze that a little bit.
Perfect, thank you.
The next financial metric that we're gonna look at is our day's net cash ratio, and what this does is help us determine if we have enough cash flow to pay our expenditures throughout the summer when we don't receive much revenue. We receive our, we are primarily funded in our general fund by property taxes and state aid. We receive our state aid over 10 months equally. We do not receive any state aid during July and August. The other big piece of our revenue is the property taxes, and we primarily get those in two big chunks during the year, in October and April. We do get property taxes every other month, but those are our big revenue months. So it's important to make sure that we have enough cash to get through the months of July and August when we still have to pay payroll, and we still have to pay utilities, and we still have to pay all of our other bills. We need to make sure that we have enough cash on hand to get through those months and not have to necessarily borrow money. The board target range that has been set is 60 to 75 days. We had an upward trend for several years, and then a little bit of a downward trend. We ended fiscal year 18 at 63 days, which is good if you look at about 60 days during the summer when we don't have a lot of revenue coming in. That's why that target is set at a minimum of 60. Now, what we are watching closely right now, because when we look at our current year budget, which we are also projecting some deficit spending, then that would get us down to about 55 days net cash at the end of this year. Please remember that budgets, we are doing our best to budget, but budgets are 100% wrong all of the time, and I don't have a crystal ball. I, or at least it's not working very well lately. So the fiscal 19 numbers are projections based on budgeting. They are not actual yet. But yes, when we look at our budget and we see that, you know, that is what we are projected to end the year at, we need to keep a close eye on that.
Is the 60 to 75 the right range?
Yes.
Other school districts that you work for, has been pretty typical?
Yeah, and I think it's pretty common, you know, in business to have about a 90 day, but for schools, when we have that two-month window where we don't have really a whole lot of revenue coming in, 60 to 75 is, is a common range.
Should cover your summer, summer months when a school is on session.
Just July and August.
Pretty much, yes.
Is there a driver, like spending here drove this number down? I mean, is there two or three things that drove that number, or is it like 100 things?
It's a combination of things, and when we get to the general fund slide, we'll talk about some of those things. The next ratio that we're gonna look at is the financial solvency ratio. The board has set a target range of 8 to 10% for this ratio. As you can see, we had an upward trend through fiscal 17. Because we had deficit spending in fiscal 18, and that fund balance dropped by about a third, that significantly impacts our solvency ratio. So our fiscal 18 solvency ratio ended at a 3.14%. That is significantly below the target range of 8 to 10. I, I am assuming or thinking that we were working our way up to that 8%, and that will be something that we discuss, you know, how, how fast we wanna get to that 8%, how we recover to that target range of 8%. Or do you adjust your target range? I do not think that a target range of 8 to 10% is out of the ordinary. I would probably recommend more towards the 10%, but this helps us in situations when we have unexpected expenditures, such as we've had in the last couple of months, helps support those, those needs. With our current budget, we are anticipating our solvency ratio to continue on a downward trend through fiscal 19.
Other school districts our size in the 8 to 10% range? Anybody as low as this that you've seen?
Oh, there are districts that are negative. So this kind of ties into the next slide too. On the next slide, we're gonna talk about unspent balance, unspending authority. Spending authority is a big topic for school districts. It's a very unique concept that only applies to school districts, so as board members, I'm sure you've all attended trainings in which they really talk to you and educate you on the whole spending authority concept. Spending authority, in my mind, and I think in, in a lot of our peers, is the most important financial target or financial ratio that a school district has. We cannot borrow spending authority. We cannot cash reserve levy for spending authority. Authority is granted to each district based on the school foundation formula, and it's primarily based off of the number of kids that we have in our district and what they call supplemental state aid, the amount that they give each district for each student each year. Spending authority also is not something that you can pull off of your general ledger. It's a calculation, it's a financial metric, but it's not something that you go pull a report out of your general ledger that says this is what your spending authority is as of today. It is not something that you typically see reported on in an audit, but it is one of the very most important financial measures that a school district can look at. IASB recommends a target between 5 and 15%. Our district ended fiscal 18 at 24.1%. We're projected for that trend to go down a little bit again in fiscal 19, but it should be widely known that we are in a very healthy state when it comes to spending authority. And the reason that's different from cash, back to your question, if we go back to the previous slide, financial solvency ratio is easier for us to manage because we can borrow money. If we needed to borrow money to pay payroll over the summer, we could borrow money. We can also do cash reserve levies, which brings us, gets that solvency ratio back up. So it's easier for a district to manage the solvency ratio issues than it is to be in a situation where you don't have any authority to spend. You could be in a situation where you have a billion dollars of cash and no authority to spend it. That is a very hard situation to explain. We are in the exact opposite. We have the authority, right now we just haven't, don't have the cash to support that authority.
And a lot of that has to do with conscientiousness about not raising taxes, and also some of it has to do with the decision to lower the tax rate a couple of years ago when we weren't utilizing all that was being asked for, for the at-risk fund.
So does it, the fact that it's been going down, does that show that we've just done a better job of spending within our bu, our category of funding as well?
In relation to the spending authority?
Like at risk, for example?
Yeah. Oops, too many slides. No, this would be more from, because what we want to do, once we have a target spending authority balance that you want to shoot for, what we try to do then is spend current year authority on current year kids. And we know what that calculation is once we have our certified budget, so this will tell us, are we spending all authority generated for a given year using prior year's authority or building levels too high? So in order to get those levels up there, we weren't spending our annual authority. But when they start coming down, we are spending more than our annual authority right now. So what we need to do is find the, the level that we're comfortable at, a range that we're comfortable at, and sustain that.
What's the formula again for unspent authorized budget? Isn't it, do you know what it is?
Well, the school foundation formula is what, about 20 pages long?
Yeah, there's the, on the, yeah, Department of Management has the unspent authorized spreadsheet on it, yeah, and it kind of gives you the summary of how it's calculated. It won't tell you where the numbers exactly come from, as those come from your yearly budget aid levies, but it does kind of give you a quick snapshot of how everything's calculated, how you get to your final unspent numbers. So here, Paulette's got it pulled up here.
Yes. The actual aid and levy, the certified budget that we do in February, March, April, that formula, which is several pages long, fills this spreadsheet in that gives us our authority. So it is based on our regular program, district cost per people. We also have additional waiting in there for special ed, for ELL, for our AEA preschool. All of that stuff comes through the formula. There are two areas on here. Why will that not go over to the, you can't see the columns over, or the descriptions over here. But anyway, one of these is our special ed deficit. The other thing that we ask for additional authority from, and we'll be doing that in a November meeting, each year we ask for the board to approve asking for authority for ELL and for open enrollment students. And so, those are areas where, you know, for fiscal 18, we asked, or we were granted $3.7 million of authority. We're given the authority, but we're not given the cash to support that. That's where the cash reserve levy comes in and the tax rate comes in. If we continue to ask for authority that we don't get the cash to support it, then your authority balance is gonna be way higher than your, your cash balance and your fund balance.
And those asking's are based on the FTE of supplemental waiting for English or the second language students or students that are identified as at risk, so it's identified needs, just like special education needs, that you're basing that number on, but again, you know, if you don't have the cash to support it, you either don't support it to the extent that you're authorized to do, or you probably, in most cases, have to impact the property tax to fund it.
And keep in mind too, that you always, always, always want to ask for whatever additional authority you can get. Having authority is not a bad thing. I would never, ever recommend not asking for the authority. Do you concur?
Absolutely, yes.
I think in a lot of the trainings that we attend, I mean, we have always, you know, that's always ask for your authority. Okay, we'll move on to the next slide. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this slide. It is in here because it's part of the board policy annual recording, so this is cash balance for all funds as of June 30th. If we were a cash basis accounting organization, it might be more meaningful, but we aren't. We report on a modified accrual basis for all funds except for the nutrition, so obviously you are all aware that even, you know, in your own personal budgeting, if your checking account says that you have $1,000 on June 30th, but you owe bills of $1,500, that $1,000 doesn't mean, it doesn't tell you the whole story. So we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this slide unless you guys have questions. The next slide is the property tax rates by fund. We have given this information to you since clear back to 2013. You can see from that chart that our property tax rate had an upward trend through fiscal 16, and then it was lowered for fiscal 17 by about 36 cents. In the last couple of years, we've had some debt service come on, about 14 to 19 cents worth. Our property tax rate for the current year is at $17.95. And then down at the bottom of the chart, you can see the breakdown by fund. This is perhaps the screen where we want to talk about, spend some time looking a little bit more into the numbers. This is pertaining only to our general fund, that main operating fund. This is the fund that we started the year with a $6 million fund balance, and we ended with a four. So what you're gonna see here on the right side is by year, we're gonna show you the total revenues and expenditures, budget and actual, for each of the previous three years. So in fiscal 16, the district budgeted revenues of 60.5 million, and we also budgeted expenditures of 60.5 million. Actually, what happened was we had revenues of 61.1 and expenditures of 60.2. It's not very common that you're gonna have revenues and expenditures that net to zero. So in fiscal 16, we had a surplus. We did not deficit spend. We had a surplus of about $896,000. Our revenues came in over budget, our expenditures came in under budget, both good things. Both good things, grew the fund balance a little bit. In fiscal seventeen, again, we had revenues and expenditures budgeted that were almost a net zero. We did budget a little bit of a deficit spend in that year. What actually happened in fiscal seventeen was we had a surplus of forty-seven thousand dollars. There's also some other things, one thing in particular that didn't happen at the end of fiscal seventeen. When we're preparing our year and financials, we accrue salaries and benefits for those that are working during the summer, but still, those salaries and benefits are part of the fiscal seventeen school year. At the end of fiscal seventeen, we think there's about half a million dollars of salaries and benefits that did not get accrued into fiscal seventeen. So, that means that they were expensed in fiscal eighteen, which makes fiscal eighteen look like it has a big deficit, deficit spend. If those wages, salaries and benefits had been accrued properly into fiscal seventeen, then fiscal seventeen would have also shown a deficit spend of potentially about half a million dollars. As we move into fiscal eighteen, the revenue that was budgeted for that year was sixty-two point nine, expenditures of sixty-two point nine. Again, almost a net zero budget. What actually happened in fiscal eighteen was that we received sixty-two point nine million dollars and we spent sixty-four point nine. So, that's that two million dollars deficit spend there. But we do know that perhaps about half a million of that deficit spend really belonged in the previous year.
Now, we also have half of the fines or fees.
Correct, correct. So, the, the, the fines, the penalties that we have recently paid, because of the time that we received those notices in two different groups at two different dates, if you will. We had the first one before we closed our books and, and submitted everything to the Department of Ed. So, in fiscal eighteen, that first payment of three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars is expensed in that year.
What year, seventeen?
Fiscal eighteen. The, the last payment of two hundred and sixty, we did not receive until after we had already closed the books. And so, that payment is expensed and included in the fiscal nineteen.
So, between the two, eighteen and nineteen, there is two and one point three, so three point three million in deficit spending between those two years. And you're trying to say that a million and one of that is explained by some?
One-time?
One-time funky stuff.
Funky stuff. I like that.
One point, one point one, five hundred thousand dollars worth of misclassification between periods and six hundred thousand worth of this IRS fine stuff.
Right. So?
So, that leaves two, like something.
Right, so what, what we are still kind of taking a deep dive into the financials, what we are trying to kind of figure out. If you look at the total expenditures for seventeen, they were sixty-one million dollars. The total expenditures for eighteen were sixty-five million dollars. That's almost a four million dollar increase in one year. We are trying to figure out exactly where those increases are coming from, but it's really kind of everywhere. We do know the two big things, the accruals and the penalties are an impact in there. And what, what we need to make sure we define is what of the, what part of those increases were just one-time expenditures, that they're not going to occur over and over and over again. And both of those issues that we've mentioned just now, those will not occur over and over and over again. Those are one-time issues. So, we are focusing on building a budget based on what we actually intend to spend. As you can see, the fiscal nineteen budget is not a zero-based budget or a zero-net budget. We know that our revenues are going to be right around sixty-three point six million dollars. And we know that eighty percent of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. So, we have looked at all of those salaries and benefits and our budget is based on those actual salary and benefits.
Most of, if not all, most of the increases in staffing that had come before you in the past two years were in categoricals. So, there may have been an additional staff member at the secondary level added. But the one thing that we have to really take a look at is if we're right sizing staffing based on enrollment changes. And so, for example, each of the past two years with certified, we've been down thirty kids at kindergarten from what we had previously been getting. It's not always an apples to apples reducing, you know, one or two teachers because those kids are spread out. But we know that as one example that we need to take a look at. But as Paulette said, with a preponderance of any school budgeting and staffing, that's something that we're really going to have to take a look at to make sure we're making the adjustments down, just as you would make them up if you had increases. And keep in mind, each of the last two years, we've had increases in sta- or in student count. This year will be different.
So, you've gone through all of those, you're going through, I assume, check by check, fund by fund, line by line, to identify where that extra million and a half dollars of spending above your budget came from, right?
Yes, so, we have our line item budget in the general fund is, with the new ESA requirements for building level expenditures and such. It's growing, but right now, we're looking at over four thousand account numbers. What we are doing is looking tho- looking at those in groups by object code. So, we're looking at all teacher salaries. We're looking at all travel. We're breaking it down into groups like that. Now, some of the things that we are seeing, for instance, there, we have, and I'm just pulling this out, I don't mean to pick on any group of people, but, you know, we have a set number of nurses that we've had. Our nurse budget was about half of what it actually ended up being. So, we're not, we're rebuilding our budget based on actual people and actual salaries and benefits, so that we have an accurate budget and we will know, we can monitor that on a month-to-month basis. And then if there's something that looks funny, we'll know before the end of the year. I don't know if, you know, I've gone back and looked through some of the prior reports that the budget to actual, and for last year, I think it was very, it was very early on in the year where the salaries were like a million dollars over the prior year's total. So, we'll watch things like that.
Do, do building leaders, is spending authority and then associated budget responsibility delegated from here down to building principals?
Well?
Buildings would oversee their building budget.
So, a principal has the authority to spend money up to their budget? Is that well monitored? It would indicate by the total that it is not, but I, I could be wrong.
Let me just share with you that our building budgets are less than one percent of our total general fund budget. So, they're really a very small piece that the, that is discretionary out there.
Okay, so maybe that's not a driver of this.
Right, no, it is not. It is not.
But some, something is.
You, you said eighty percent of the budget is salary income, right?
Salaries and benefits, yes.
So, we're dealing with twenty percent on, we're talking about twelve million dollars.
So, so, one of the things that we notice when we break these down into smaller groups and look at them is that in fiscal seventeen, I think it was fiscal seventeen, for teacher salaries, we spent about twenty-six point two million dollars. Well, for the fiscal eighteen budget, we only budgeted twenty-five point something million. So, the question we asked, we, you know, were there reductions? You would expect to see that number go down if there had been some staff reductions or something like that. But we didn't see that. So, we are s- we, yes, we are spending a good amount of time diving down, digging down into these questions, but we also are trying to focus on getting, you know, going forward too. We have to spend time working on getting this year's budget established and communicated out. I would also tell you that we are having individual meetings with every person that manages any budget. We're meeting with the building principals. We're meeting with every director that has any management of any budget and having discussions with them and trying to just wrap our heads around where we're at, where we're going.
I would say, I would say we're also educating as we go along with those conversations as well.
Paulette, does a, if I own a cost center or I have a budget, do I get a monthly report that shows where I am and spending year-to-date for my budget or?
They will, yes. Those reports were being provided on a monthly basis. We are in the process of getting everybody that has budget management tasks. We are getting them set up in our software system so that they can go out online twenty-four seven and pull up their reports and see their own budgets and monitor those on more than a monthly basis.
And did you say there's four thousand account numbers in the general fund?
Yes.
And that's going?
Please tell me that that's not?
It's, it's going to grow, actually, yeah.
It's growing, yes.
Because one of the challenges that we've run into as we've been trying to do some of these deep dives is the, the Department of Ed has a specified chart of accounts of where to code everything. We're finding where things weren't coded where they should have been for, for one reason or another. I'm, I'm not going to try and point to figure to anybody with that. So, we've been having, you know, I mentioned education, that's one of the things we're trying to re-educate the building principals, the department heads, as well as other staff on that, you know, submit invoices for processing and things like that, is educating people where things properly need to be coded so that when we're here in front of you guys and we're doing our own internal analysis is that we can really try to truly see what areas we're spending how in.
So, if we're educating people to code correctly?
Yes.
Why are we adding even more account numbers to make it more complicated to know what I need to code my charges against?
Are?
Is it because the state says you have to use all these?
Yeah, it's basically because of that chart of accounts that there's different, you know, there's instructional function areas with different object codes for salaries, benefits, travel supplies, what have you, different types of supplies, so. Yeah, I, I, I wish, I wish there was a similar way for it, but that's?
This, this, yeah. This for ex- this, for example, not, this is the Iowa chart of account coding for schools. It's sixty-three pages long.
As it should be.
The, the charted accounts is, it's like a puzzle. You can, it has one, two, it has six different parts to each account number. And it's like a puzzle that has to fit together. If we try and upload a file to the Department of Ed at the end of the year that doesn't like two parts of that account number, they say in this, this report, you cannot use this function with that object, then it gets booted back to us and we have to fix it. So, this is literally a sixty-three page document of how we code things.
To, to your point though, Ross, I think, you know, as daunting as that probably seems, it, you know, i- if I'm a building, typically, there's only going to be probably a small handful of accounts that I typically use anyway. I'm not going to be using the, the other, say, three thousand accounts. I may only have maybe?
Twenty-five or thirty.
Yeah, if that, so.
And we give each of those groups that are managing a budget, they will be provided with an updated list of only their chart of account numbers. They aren't going to have to search through sixty-three.
So, also, they'll also, we're working on like little cheat sheets to kind of let them identify, okay, this, I need to be coding it to these accounts as well.
I have two timeline questions. Last February, when we certified the budget, we certified an inaccurate budget presented to us, question mark?
Sounds like the answer is easy, yes.
Yeah. Um, second question, timeline. Last year and previous, during negotiations, as we were trying to bring pairs and secretaries closer in line with the private sector, I asked the question with each one of those, can we sustain this wage? The answer was yes. Is that an inaccurate answer? Okay, now we know where we are and why we got there.
Well, I think, you know, back to Paulette's earlier comments regarding, you know, looking at some of these line item accounts in hindsight, you know, I mean, Finance 101 is usually you overestimate your expenditures and underestimate your revenues. And it appears that over the course of the past two years, the exact opposite's occurred. And as we've talked through some of these accounts, you know, not having directly been a part of identifying what that should be, we can't figure out why in the world it was projected that we would spend a certain amount, kind of like Paulette said. I mean, you're, you're not going to expect reductions in expenditures if you're not cutting staff because eighty percent of your account, and we have not had any discussions about a need or desire, had not had any discussions about the need or desire to do that in order to balance what our current level of spending and revenues were at that time, so.
Right, but the only way you're going to get there is if you're, have significant high-cost retirees, people that retire and you replace them with a person with no experience, right? That's your only?
That's part of it, or, you know, if through attrition, you find you don't need a re-.
Right, right, but we, we've never had those discussions.
I think the other thing, you know, one of the questions that I raised to the former Finance Director when I first came on, I was surprised at the amount of money that we were choosing to spend out of the general fund to support the technology initiative of the one-one. In most districts, you absolutely would try to avoid that and you would use PEPAL dollars or sales tax dollars and not the same dollars that would be funding salaries and benefits. And so, over time, we, in the last years, we started to progress towards more of that being attributed to PEPAL and sales tax. And now, we're at a point where I think we've got it all over there. But those are some of the types of things that first and foremost, we'll look to do and as we identify coding issues from the past and making sure that we're coding appropriately, you know, any opportunity we have to, to move general funding expenditures to categorical funding, we're absolutely going to do that. And, and in doing so, need to also make sure that those categoricals are right sized as well as far as revenues and expenditures.
Other questions or we can move on?
So, for you, one quick question. You have this deficit of one or two point two. We know what one point one is. How, how far down, how close do you, do you? How, how far down, how close do you, do you realistically think you can get Paulette understanding what caused it? I mean, you, you'll never get, you'll never get to zero, right?
No.
As much as you'd love to, you'll never get to zero.
We will, we will never. We just don't have the time.
Right, right. What's, what do you think is reasonable? And if you don't know, you don't know, that's fine.
I don't know.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't know.
Yep, that's fine, no worries.
But, but we absolutely want to try to-
Oh, most certainly, that's, yeah, but you'd need an army of accountants and you don't have the time.
So, so if you know something, send them our way, that would be great, it's a volunteer time, yeah.
So, would this be anything that might come out in audit?
So, we can't do anything about what happened yesterday, we can only do something about what happens tomorrow.
Yes, exactly.
Also, if I look at my expenditures, my actual general fund expenditures on this slide, went from sixty point two million to sixty-one, or an increase of eight hundred thousand.
Yep.
And went from sixty-one to sixty-five, big increase.
Yep.
And now this budget, this is, this is your budget, Paulette, right? This is your first budget.
Yes.
And, and now you're saying, we're gonna spend less, we're gonna spend sixty-four point nine when we've never shown a history of doing so.
Right.
How confident are you that this number is the right number?
Well, this number will never be the actual number. We are doing our best to create a, a budget that resembles what we are actually doing. But you have to remember here too that we aren't going to have a salary, a benefit accrual issue in this year. That's in both those prior years, that is not in this year. We also don't have three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of penalties that we paid in fiscal eighteen that is not in this year. So that explains the eight hundred dollar, or eight hundred thousand dollar reduction between the deficit spends, those two issues. We are still working with, because we have shared out, you know, the, the more we can tighten up this year, the better off it's going to be going forward. So we not, are not saying, go out and spend sixty-four point nine million dollars. We're saying be very cognizant and conscientious about what you are spending so that perhaps we don't have to get to that sixty-four point nine. There's also a couple of things that, if you remember a couple earlier this year, we approved, the board approved, the salary lane changes for the teachers. Those lane changes amounted to, I think, about two hundred and-
Sixty thousand?
Sixty-ish thousand dollars. We don't see where those have ever been built into the budget anywhere. So that's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar expenditure that's on this year's books that we did not plan for. Those salary lane changes are not part of the negotiation process. They don't get negotiated, they're not part of that total package increase. So there's things like that. Another area where we have underbudgeted is our concurrent enrollment costs. We have a great concurrent enrollment program, but it does cost money. And we've seen that we have not budgeted appropriately for those, those, that program either.
So eighty percent, you said eighty percent of this sixty-five million dollar number of salaries, right? And we've got twelve hundred employees, roughly?
Eight hundred on a regular basis.
And then with part times, you know, so you're right. So, that eighty percent is divided out over about twelve hundred people, roughly.
Our pay, our payroll yesterday was nine hundred and seventeen individuals.
Okay.
That includes substitutes.
Nine hundred and seventeen. But, it would seem to me that for those nine hundred and seventeen people, I can predict what I'm going to pay them down to the penny.
We have to.
Salary, benefits, I should be able, and that's eighty percent of the budget, right?
Yes.
And so, it should be, it should be unacceptable to be outside of a range of one or two percent, one way or the other, on salary and benefits, and that's eighty percent, right?
You are correct.
They're three percent of our target on that, so.
Yeah, and so, when, when you talk about budget's never gonna be this or that, I mean, we're only talking, you're only referring to a small piece of the budget.
Right, so our, our budget, that's-
So are you confident that that nine hundred and seventeen people in fiscal year nineteen is spot on?
Yes.
Okay.
Our budget, eighty percent salaries and benefits, the second biggest expenditure in our budget is tuition. We spend about five million dollars in tuition to other districts for open enrollment out for college costs. That's the second biggest part of our budget. The third biggest part of our budget is utilities. We can get really darn close on salaries and benefits. We can get really darn close on tuition costs now that we have gone through certified enrollment. Our, our tuition budget is actually based on our certified enrollment from October. And we have built in to that budget, costs for the, the concurrent enrollment program. Yeah, so those, you know, those things, yes, we should be able to get pretty darn close. That's the intent. That is the intent.
So, that being said, you should feel pretty comfortable that your budget of sixty-four nine is pretty close. You should feel pretty confident that that number's pretty close?
Yes.
Even though we've never shown a propensity to reduce our spending from one year to the other? Right?
Yeah, but part of your issue though, which also got inflation, right? You've got, you know, you've got some other that you can't control.
I know, and, and, but we're saying, we're gonna control that issue.
The sixty-four point nine from last year's got those one, some of those one tie-in.
Got some stuff, yeah, I get it, I get it. It's also got a, you know, a couple percent bump for salaries.
Yeah, absolutely, yep, yep.
You know, going back to what Paulette and Randy mentioned about lane change advancements and those costs, I mean, there's no reason that we shouldn't have trend lines in the past in terms of what those have been. I don't believe we've had those. But the other part of that, the kind of sort of balances that out generally as well are the turnover, turnover, turnover savings when you have new younger people replacing older veteran people. It costs more, so a lot of times that, one washes out the other. I would say, you know, and we project roughly when that happens and it's not absolute every time someone gets replaced, but roughly it's about twenty thousand dollars per person and changeover. I would say that based on the number of retirements that we've had in the recent past, it probably isn't equating to two hundred and forty or two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of savings, so.
We are looking at everything analytically and a perfect example of that is when working on our teacher's salary budget for this year, some questions came up that we posed to some other directors and discovered that we currently have twelve less teacher FTE than we did last year. Some of those are open positions, a lot of those were special ed positions that weren't filled. So, that, those are the kinds of questions we're, we're asking when we're looking at things analytically. Does this make sense? Why is this number this number? And since we don't have the history here, we have to ask a lot of questions of people. And I was able to get that information then from our, our coworkers.
So were those twelve that were chosen not to be backfilled? Or they were just, there was a placeholder there and we were gonna fill it, we just hadn't, didn't have the person hired yet?
A little bit of both, 'cause if either someone couldn't be found in some cases and thus they rearrange people, you know, to cover, or in some cases, you know, based on budget or, or IEPs or other factors, it wasn't deemed necessary to continue with replacing them.
So you wouldn't carry that cost forward, but you'd have to carry the cost of the placeholder, right?
And, and currently, we do not have any placeholders for teachers built into the current year budget. I'm told there are two open positions yet that are, they just aren't able to fill.
Are we gonna try to fill them? 'Cause if we are, then we should have placeholder expense of the budget, right?
Oh, right, right, yeah.
So that means our budget could be off a little bit, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know, one thing that I feel badly about is the thing that Vee, that Vee talked about. We sit in negotiations with whether they're teachers or pairs or bus drivers or whomever and we, we talk about how much we can afford to pay more and, you know, we're, we're, we're going into that negotiation with our hands tied, our hand or back and our eyes closed 'cause we have no, apparently, we have no freaking idea what we can and can't afford. And so, that really sucks to be in that position, and so-
I know.
And so, I'll say to Theron, to you two, let's never be in that position again, absolutely.
That is the goal.
Yeah, and, and we realize, you realize, that we know that we've got some employment groups that are, that we need to desperately figure out how we can more fairly and appropriately compensate them. We made some strides in that area two years ago and of course, last year, you know, we tried to, we basically said we weren't in a position to be able to do that sort of thing, but we, I think we made decisions based on the belief that we were in a better position than we actually were.
Or we made those decisions based on the fact that we were getting nothing in state aid not based on information that is given to us from the budget. Onto enrollment?
Okay, onto enrollment. There's a couple of different terms here that we wanna make sure that we're all understanding. What we're used to talking about is certified enrollment. That is the topic, you know, when we ask our peers, what's your certified enrollment doing? What's your certified enrollment doing? So, certified enrollment includes waiting for such things as special education, supplementary waiting, dual enrollment. Certified enrollment is not a head count number. Certified enrollment is what is going to determine our, our spending authority or a big piece of our spending authority for the upcoming year. Perhaps more importantly, in my mind at least, is the served enrollment because the money follows the kids. So it's very important to know whether we are net in, net out, you know, how much of that money that we're getting has to be sent out to other districts, that second biggest part of our budget, that tuition cost. So we've got a couple of different metrics here on this screen. The blue bars are your certified enrollment numbers since two thousand and thirteen, fiscal thirteen, which is actually the count as of October two thousand and eleven. So on this chart, on the far right, you'll see October two thousand and eighteen. That's the date of the enrollment count. That will provide the funding basis for our fiscal year twenty. Our trends are, kinda looks like a roller coaster a little bit, which is not uncommon for districts. But this, in this last enrollment that we certified in October, our certified enrollment was down ninety-one point something and our served enrollment was down eighty. The good news in this is that if we look at this chart, the trend for the net out is going down. That's really good and that is something to be proud of and to be shared and so our net, net out was down from four ninety-seven to four seventy-eight, which I think was about a four percent decrease.
And we have, and the in is also trending upward at the same time.
The open enrollment in for seventeen was eighty-six and then the open enrollment in for eighteen was eighty-three. So it's holding steady, but it is a definite, significant increase from fifteen and sixteen. Definitely, yeah, you've almost doubled your ins. That's great. This will just show you our served enrollment in a couple of different ways, by level, K four, Phi eight, nine, twelve. And then the chart, the pie chart on the right, shows you the served enrollment percent by grade. There's not a whole lot of variance between grades when you look at it in that chart, but if we look at the next chart, maybe, there we go. This shows you, this demonstrates more of the, the class size variance and what Theron was referring to earlier when, you know, we're graduating larger classes than we're typically bringing in. I think this past year, we had thirty, thirty less-
Come in.
Come in than we graduated. And so what-
And that's been the case each of, now this year and last year.
So it's going to be really helpful to us to see the enrollment projection study that we're working on because what, what really kinda sticks out to me when I look at this is that right in the middle, we have a whole bunch of big classes. Those classes are gonna move through and if we continue to only have kindergarten sizes of three hundred and fifty, you know, if our kindergarten sizes continue to be smaller, we have classes that are moving through that are pretty large, those few years in there are gonna be very important to plan for funding-wise.
On the, on the average, do the numbers stay pretty true from kindergarten through twelve? If you look at twelfth grades at three sixty, they usually stay plus or minus one or two percent?
Well, they, they tend to get a guard where as they get, you know, we've had, we've really been trained to, which we don't have a chart here to show, but combat the dropout rate examples. So typically, we'll have a decrease in class size as they go through nine through twelve. Each of the last, I think, three years, we've reduced that number of kids dropping out so we have more resident students to count. So, just as we're trying to change the trajectory with the open enrollment, we wanna continue to change the trajectory with the dropout rate as well.
So you're saying, you know, like, my daughter's a twelfth grader and there's three hundred and sixty kids in that class. If I went back eighteen years ago when she started kindergarten, there was probably more in that class than-
There may have been, yeah.
Your daughter's been in school for eighteen years.
Or whatever, yeah, 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 I'm in my math, thirteen years ago. Thank you, Ross.
Well, actually, it's gradology.
Better not.
I'm talking probably more just between ninth and twelfth grade. So when, when her class came in at ninth grade, it was probably significantly larger than- like, maybe seventy students larger or something.
Really, that big, that much?
Could be, I mean, that are, that's been, the number of dropouts have gone from a hundred down to about seventy now for that four-year span.
We have enrollment, certified enrollment data available through the Department of Ed back probably eighteen to twenty years. And someday when we're really bored, we'll start mining-
After you mine those four thousand accounts, yeah.
Create another thousand of that.
It is, it is interesting to see the trends over time.
Yeah.
But we do get, and I think there is some trend line data with it on each year with graduation rate as well as dropout rate, those come at the same time.
So, you're probably all asking yourself, what is the fiscal impact of enrollment decline? You're probably aware of the term budget guarantee. The Marshall Town- The Marshall County School District has not been on the budget guarantee since fiscal twelve. But the budget guarantee exists for school districts as a mechanism to help them right-size over the next year due to declining enrollment. What happens when districts experienced, if districts are experiencing declining enrollment, which totals more and the total revenue loss is more than the increase in supplemental state aid, you can, you become eligible for the budget guarantee. The budget guarantee is, is a resolution that we will ask you to approve when we do the certified budget process. But it is also one hundred percent funded by property tax. And so there is a property tax impact of being on the budget guarantee. What we know right now is that we, we've looked at the numbers and we are making some assumptions here. And, and I'm open to discussing these assumptions or changing these assumptions if you see, deem that appropriate. What you're gonna see in this chart, and I did print this out for you so that you can look at it on paper. This is a, kind of a calculator that we use to do some forecasting based on some different assumptions, which include enrollment and supplemental state aid increases. So if we go back, the first year we're looking at here is fiscal seventeen. This chart will show you the certified enrollment for that year, five thousand three twenty-one. For that year, we were given a two point two five percent increase in supplemental state aid. That, you know, we'll get, we'll start hearing a lot more about supplemental state aid and the increases to schools here. I'm sure after the election is, is over. This, and then we go through a calculation here that shows us what our new money will be for each year. So if you look at fiscal seventeen, this district had new money of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Are you, you're all familiar with the new money terminology, right? It's kinda like an increase in your revenue budget, very broadly stated. But the other thing to remember here is that even though as a state, school districts were granted two point two five percent supplemental state aid, you will notice for this district, the percent of new money is one point oh two percent. So I think it's, it's a, it's a belief out there that, oh, two point two five, two point two five was what was approved, two point two five is what we get. That is not always the case. As you can see in fiscal eighteen, and that's, that's a, that's a factor of the whole formula and having increasing enrollment and decreasing enrollment, that all plays into that.
So that, that, what you just described for fiscal seventeen was likely the result of declining enrollment? Versus what you'll see in eighteen?
Right, yeah, so then if you look at eighteen, you know, you're up a hundred and some kids there. You, we only as a state were granted one point one one percent increase in supplemental state aid. But if you look down at the bottom, because your enrollment went up significantly, your new money percent was a three point two seven. So I think a lot of focus, a lot of attention and focus are given to supplemental state aid percentage. But we really need to be cognizant within our district of what that percentage equates to for us. As you can see in fiscal nineteen, we had again an increase in enrollment. So that one percent at the state level equated to a one point four three percent at the district level. When we look at fiscal year twenty, we know based on certified enrollment from last month that we have five thousand three sixty-six point six FTEs that we will be funded on. We are making an assumption in there right now of one percent supplemental state aid increase. That one percent is based on conversations that we have with our peers and some believe that that is even optimistic. But I am certainly open to, if any of you have any other numbers that you would like to look at in that, that box, we can certainly do that. But I'm, I'm comfortable with one percent in there. And because we are on the budget guarantee, because we had that ninety-one student drop in certified enrollment, you go down to the red line, the red cell, that is the impact of being on the budget guarantee. Six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of our budget next year would be generated by property taxes.
By an increase in property taxes specifically related to this?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Yes. If we have done, run the numbers and it would take a two point seven five percent increase in supplemental state aid for this district to not be on the budget guarantee in fiscal twenty.
Not gonna happen. And that's what you're trying to convince me, right?
Yeah. So it, it doesn't really matter, you know, in that supplemental state aid cell, that one percent, until that gets to be two point seven five, it will not change your new money. What it will change is the budget guarantee property tax portion and the impact on the property tax rate. So if we got a two percent increase in supplemental state aid, our new money of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand will not change, but the property tax implication of being on the budget guarantee will go down. So we still want to push for as much supplemental state aid as we can get. It's still vital that we get those increases.
One other thing too, as you mentioned, it will be helpful to have the enrollment studies. So at least we have a scientific way to project.
Right.
We should anticipate our student enrollment to be. We've had, as of recent, some big swings, obviously, having grown by about a hundred and forty resident students the past two years and now being down, you know, maybe upwards of ninety this year. We're digging into those ninety, knowing that the residents do, to try to figure out what, if any, impact the tornado had on that. And so hopefully by Monday, I'll have a little bit more insight for you regarding that. But we do know that fourteen of our, of our families were living at the time of the tornado in the houses that were condemned, so to speak, by the city. We don't know how many, how many of them actually may have left the community versus having relocated within the community and that sort of thing. We know there's some other houses that weren't marked that were vacated as well. But it, it's, it's a little bit challenging when, under normal circumstances, we have twenty-five percent mobility. But usually that mobility is students out, students in because it's job-related. You know, particularly I'd say with JBS because we kinda mirror their mobility rate. But this one kind of threw us for a loop as a, at the beginning of the year, we thought, for the most part, people had shown up as we had shared. But by October first, we had a significant number of people gone that, that we weren't anticipating. And they are residents, because as you've seen with the open enrollment, that's starting to turn around.
Is, is another way of saying this, that in the next fiscal year, you're talking about balancing the budget with this additional sixty cents per thousand budget guarantee property tax? Is that another way of saying the same thing?
Um, I'm not sure I understand exactly this.
So the ways to balance the budget, so we were, we're at seventeen ninety-five, right? That's the tax rate this year?
Right, so, yeah, are you talking about balancing the property tax rate or the budget?
So what I'm hearing is that seventeen, seventeen ninety-five is gonna have to go to eighteen fifty next year because of this issue.
So as I shared with the principals the other day, there are many pieces to the property tax puzzle. This estimate is based on all things being equal. It is based on valuations as of today. It is based on all things being equal except for the that. So there will, you know, hopefully be valuation increases yet that we realize. We'll get those in December, so we'll know whether our, our taxable valuation's going up or down. So then we can recalculate that. There are many pieces to the property tax that factor into this. So it kinda depends on how all of those work together. You know, we've talked in the past about income surtax, you know, that, that property tax discussion. There's, you know, we have an SBRC application that we're going to be asking for additional authority for, for our ELL population. And do we, do we levy the cash to support that spending? There are all sorts of different things to consider and look at when we work on that line item or the, not the line item, the certified budget, that aid and levy process.
Get it, get it. The way to balance a budget is collect more money or spend less, right? At the highest level, right? And so what this chart led me to think is that we're gonna collect more money to do it. We're not gonna think about spending less. And what I want to encourage you is before we automatically say, we're gonna increase property taxes, I'd like the district to go through some thought on, is there any areas where we can spend less money?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And really, in the whole aid and levy process, there's very few areas where a board has discretion to change or to impact the property tax rate. It's mostly the formula that determines how a district is funded. Unfortunately, this district has low valuation per student. And so that makes the property taxes higher, you know, which is unfortunate. So there's just, there's many pieces to the puzzle that we will have to have discussions about and consider. One of the thing, you good? Okay. One of the things that I wanted to point out with this chart here is that there is a long-term impact of being on the budget guarantee too. This mechanism allows districts, gives them one year to kind of right-size. But when you look at this chart, if you look at fiscal twenty-one, and let me back up here just a minute, you'll see one percent in all those out-years and those are increases in enrollment of five each year. Those are the numbers, I pulled those numbers from the Forecast Five model that was shared with you in January. That's where those numbers came from. We can certainly put in different numbers, as many numbers as we want to do different forecast, forecast measures. But the important thing to note here is that once you've been on the budget guarantee, you have to right-size by the next year. So if you look at fiscal twenty-one, at one percent supplemental state aid and an increase in enrollment of five, that would mean that the district has negative new money. So they give you one year to kind of figure it out, but then by the next year, you have to have it figured out. And this, this scenario here does not show the budget guarantee for two consecutive years. When it really becomes painful for a district is if you're on the budget guarantee for two consecutive years. That declining enrollment, it, it's really, doesn't give you any new money.
Yeah. And it looks like a lot or much of Marshall County has been experiencing declining enrollment. And I spoke with East Marshall and West Marshall and they're both down about twenty students. This is Randy would know, is this the second or third consecutive year of decline?
For East Marshall?
Yeah.
Every year, I was there four and a half years, it declined every year.
And I'm, I'm not sure on Green Mountain or one yet, but. That hasn't always been the case, but this was a year where it appears that most are declining in our county.
IASB puts out these maps every so often, and this one came out recently. You may have already seen it in your email, but I thought it was really interesting, so I printed one out for you. But this shows you, this is the current year fiscal nineteen, fifty-three point nine percent of school districts in the state are on the budget guarantee this year. That is a product of low supplemental state aid. The way the formula works, you have to get your money to support your programs, either through state aid or property taxes. When we get low supplemental state aid increases, that shifts more of it to property tax. And you'll hear the legislators talk a lot about that. Because as I said before, budget guarantee is a hundred percent property tax. But yeah, that's, it's an interesting map to look at.
Sixty, did you say sixty percent of all the districts are on?
Fifty-three point nine are on the budget guarantee.
Which is a function of low increases in stuff and declining enrollment?
Not even necessarily declining enrollment. I mean, if they only have, if they have stable enrollment or.
Yeah, here's a couple that have like one percent increase in enrollment and are still on.
The budget guarantee is there to give you a hundred and one percent, guarantee you a hundred and one percent of your regular program costs from the prior year, just for one year, one year only. Then you have to start.
And so it's like meant to, okay, school district, you better go through an austerity program right now. That's the message from the legislature when you do this?
Or increase your property tax, income surcharge, surtax. Because they want us to be the bad guy instead of them.
I think, I think as far as number of districts or percentage of districts that are experiencing declining enrollment, it's probably in sixty percent range, it's not sixty-five has been pretty standard and so.
They're on declining enrollment?
Yeah, so when you couple that with low state aid, that, that number is gonna grow and grow unless, at some point it hits right-size.
Don't forget to vote.
Can we write you?
Can we write you in?
No.
So the final slide here is just a recap of some of the budget considerations that we will be thinking about in the next couple of months. In, you know, improvement of our financial solvency ratio, what we want that trend to be, or how we, how we increase that more towards the eight percent target and the timeline in which we do that. We're keeping a very close eye on the, the general fund budget because we anticipate budget, deficit spending again.
We will move forward with a position of spending on needs and not warrants.
Right. Increasing benefit costs, health insurance costs. The good news that we received today is that IPRs has finished their actuary evaluation and will not be increasing rates again next year for IPRs. So that's, that's a positive. If you remember, we had an increase in IPRs rates for this year, which impacted our budget by over a hundred thousand dollars. We know that we have new money of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for next year. Unless any of you can give us two point seven five percent. unless any of you can give us two point seven five percent. And that there is a property tax impact of being on the budget guarantee, of, you know, cash reserve levies, early retirement incentive is one hundred percent paid for by property tax. These are all things that we have to consider.
Thank you for all the work to pull this together.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this education is good.
I know it just leads to probably more questions than answers, but we are working diligently on moving forward and-
Are you drawn on any outside resources to help look at this two point one million of unexpected? Is it worth spending any money to bring in some temporary accounts to help go through this or?
Actually, we intend to have, we, we subscribe to Forecast Five, which is a forecasting program and they have great resources there, so we are intending to have, what's his name?
Gary.
Gary, Gary Sinclair or Laura come in once we get through the entire line item budget for this year. I intend to invite them in to sit down and they do have, they do have our file for fiscal eighteen. They've already imported that, but yeah, we will, I, I absolutely want a second set of eyes to come in and review stuff with us. And then the auditors will be here probably for fieldwork in January.
Is this still the state auditor's office?
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
There's no way to get them in sooner?
With their backlog that they have right now, it's, yeah, we're kind of at their mercy.
And as we talked about back in July, you know, I mean, as soon as we knew there were some issues, we phoned them from a consultative standpoint from that and determined that we wanted to not only officially invoke them on the IRS issue but, and other related matters, but that's why we came to you asking about, asking our former auditing firm to step out of the contract so that we could move forward for this next year with the state auditor's office to make sure no stone was left unturned.
Any other questions for Paula and Randy? Thank you very much for your efforts on our behalf.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Can move.
Second.
Laura Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries six zero.